Yeah.
I believe it's due to what happened to the streets of America in two three. Any physical.
Thank you.
BD is called.
We'll start with roll call.
Mackey. McGreen and. Baxter and Harper and Bassett.
Here.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda presented.
They make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All the favorite day are.
Aye.
All posts in it. Eyes have it. Moving on to public comment. Anybody wants to go first?
I'm here about ordinance point three A.
Okay. You just want to talk about it, or are you here? You got something you want to say about it?
I just, yeah, I have some concerns about it that I stopped up today and got, got the. Ordinance, a copy of the ordinance, and it doesn't say anything about containment cages, facilities, buildings, it does say quantity, I do see we have commits. And. Who's going to be enforcing the ordinance? What I understand other cities have. No containment for them, you just get a set of chickens and they're supposed to stay in here. So. I just want to know what the consideration is for housing them.
Yeah.
There's a permit. Yeah, it's all in.
I understand, I see there's a permit here.
Yeah, they have to be in an enclosure.
It doesn't say that.
It's on the permit. But we didn't finish all the permit till we even decided whether they were, it was going to pass the ordinance for chickens to be allowed in town.
So this is going to pass the ordinance, so then you're going to have an addition to that?
Yeah, the permit has all the rules and stuff on it, so the ordinance, we did not want, some cities, you see the ordinance, has every single rule and it adds five, six, seven, eight pages to it. Um, we elected not to do that, is my understanding, council going this route, is just having the ordinance and then the permit will have all that information. Um, I think the permit that I have created, Huxley's is very similar, I took a lot from theirs. Um, it's like two, three pages of the rules that you have to, with that permit, you're agreeing to those rules. And within there, um, it does have, like, they have to be in an enclosure and it has to be a run, you know, it can't just be, one thing we discussed was, you can't just have a yard and your chickens are all in your yard, so it has to be very specific, there's rules about how close the enclosure can be to neighbors' houses, your houses, so it's very detailed.
Okay. I, I just heard about it. Actually live Friday and I thought. I, of course, I, I wouldn't know anything about it, but I, then I thought, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned. You know, how many people in town want chickens? Did you do any kind of survey or anything to find out how many people want chickens or interested?
I didn't this round, the last round, couple hundred, I think there was like four hundred signatures, between three hundred and fifty, four hundred signatures. My personal experience, um, the amount of people that came to me wanting chickens, um, was very high, so there's been people that have attended our council meetings that have spoken in support of it. And you were the first person that has attended that has not spoken in support of it or had concerns, so.
It's not what I got.
No, I meant, you know, concern, you're the first person that just has not spoken or.
I just want to make sure. If my neighbors have them, they're not my.
Right, right.
I beat up my dog and I.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's all part of the permit, so.
Thank you.
Good. Any other comments?
Yeah. I believe in October, we were asking him to clean up his property and I wanted to come in today and say that I've been keeping track of it. And I think he's really making some improvements and really trying hard to follow your direction.
Thank you, sir. Good. I'm done. Thanks. Any other?
Yeah, so I got a notice about parking in the yard and I was kind of doing some research on it. So can you park on the grass for like short period of time?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty, yes. Uh, I got a notice, um, eventually, yeah, I do want to grab them down, just right now, I'm, uh, kind of got a bunch of projects going on, I lived in Cambridge for about five months now. Um, and I'm taking on more than I can shoot currently, the little projects and then taking fire along and of course work is slammed. What I'm asking for is if I can get obviously some time next year to actually do the other projects need to get done, two of their, I need to do two retaining walls. I've got some water issues in my yard that I need to take care of. Another issue I'll bring in another time, I'll wait and see what happens, but there's a church behind my house that I'm getting told to dump any water on my property and it's flooding like in front of, probably going to stick in words flooding that up from the drainage line. I haven't seen it yet, but I've been told in the springtime that we're going to have a plant right here. Haven't seen it yet, but it's another thing I want to address. And obviously that pipe runs right through around for that gravel pad. And I have to tear that up because of a broken pipe or something, I don't want to do a lot of work, so. Yeah, that's an extension, I was going to write you guys a letter, I don't have a laptop, I have a little touchscreen thing, a tablet. Um, I just, I just come here today instead, kind of addressed with you guys. Just, but you know, that one, I obviously, I'm working a few upon my property, I just wanted five months to do a good project. My, not my help in town, I didn't pay that much. But yeah, that was what I wanted to address.
Good.
Is there like a procedure that I need to ask for, like another way, you're asking for like the extension for putting in a gravel pad?
Well, just to be put on the agenda, the public comment section, we're really not supposed to go back and forth with discussion on things.
Okay, I don't know, I don't know.
I guess we're doing it now, but. Get some things out of the way.
Okay. So is there a way that I can do something currently, like put papers underneath the tires, something like that, that would like be in a, kind of a loophole?
You file for a parking pad permit first?
Okay, I've kind of done this process, I talked to the guy at the building, not building, safe buildings, he said there's no permit required. He said there's no permit required for it. What he told me, because I was calling, I came to talk to you, he, I called him and he said there's no permit requirement around that. If it's concrete, sure, but he said there's no.
There's a permit.
There's a permit.
He told me incorrect, then. He just said he'd submit like a layout of like how big it is and how wide it is, but that's just, there's no actual permit required, he said, he said he wanted to come out and look at it.
Yeah.
So he was, he was incorrect.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good, you know.
I think that's one of the sections that's not under ordinance, it's, uh, it's under ordinance, but it's not the right place. The driveways and parking jam, so.
So I won't, I won't even file for a, they have to come out and kind of just park out, help the lanes with the area of what I'm doing.
Yep, yep, it's got to be big enough to cover whatever you're going to put on it. That's what it is.
Okay.
There's guidelines of so, so much of your yard has to stay yard, you can't be ninety percent of your property.
I did scan on, oh, just the, I'm, I'm going to see if you came to the website, I did see that. Okay, cool. That's all I have.
Any other comments? Bill? Hearing none?
If he could, if he needs to.
Okay, yeah, say something.
Yeah, I apologize because I haven't gotten more done. But my intentions are good, I plan on carrying through on everything that we discussed, and I've got the proposal written down for one of the two South Water Street. Um, you know, take down the chimney, fix the window on the south side of the building. Replace the siding, load it up during the gray show. Put siding on the east side of the building, I want to. Make a line to go over the. Window on the south side. So I can prop it open in the summertime if I'm working in there, it gets some airflow. And. I'd like to put a shipping container on the east side of the building, there's a wooden building that the gray show flew over. I'd like to put like a twenty foot shipping container there and there's, uh, a metal building back there too. That I'm going to re-sign, so it'll look better. I've got most of the siding that I need. Oh, and fix the roof. Um, I'm kind of hoping you let me fix the roof in the spring, I'm going to put a metal roof on and, uh, the roof itself doesn't leak, there's a couple of spots. Where the buildings join together, the water gets into, and I'm going to put flashing on the back. And, uh, I'm going to do the rest of the siding. I guess that's it, I've got some gravel, had some gravel delivered, I wanted to make sure I had enough, uh, cover that whole area over there and I was unaware that I needed a permit. Um, there was already quite a bit of gravel in that area, but I don't think it was wide a inch and a half deep. So I figured out just. Cover it all.
Yeah, yeah, there was already gravel there, you won't need a permit for that, you already had, there was already gravel there.
Yeah, you won't need a permit.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I tried to measure it and it was packed down so bad that I just figured I better just redo it. Um, if there's anything else I need to be made aware of, I'm mistaken. I'm doing my best to comply and I have every intention of.
Yeah, no, it looks good.
This all done, so.
Good, thank you.
I appreciate it, I really do.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Um, before we do any motion on that, uh, if you will take a look at your list of claims, there were two items, um, added at the very end. Safe building, I waited all day for key words to get back to me, we have to set up some accounts um, on our expenditures going out to them, what we keep, um, revenues and then expenditures going back and they didn't call me back. And, uh, our city attorney just sent me the invoice and I didn't want them to have to wait another month to get their payment, so I added, uh, our legal fees for last month invoice on there.
Is it okay if I take a comment?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're doing motion.
They make a motion to approve the.
Consent agenda. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All of those? As I have it. Moving on to business items. The approval of the second reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash A, ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Cambridge, Iowa by adding a new section to the animal protection and control chapter to allow domestic chickens.
Motion to approve second reading of ordinance twenty-three A.
Be back in.
During the discussion? Hearing the discussion, the roll call.
Mackey.
Aye.
McGreen, no. Baxter, yes. Harper, no. Bassett, yes. Thank you.
Read the two of passes. Uh, next approval, second reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash B, ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of Cambridge, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to solid waste collection fees.
Motion to approve second reading of ordinance number twenty-three B.
Second.
During discussion? Hearing none, the roll call.
Mackey.
Aye.
McGreen, aye. Baxter, aye. Harper, aye. Bassett, aye. Thank you.
When that passes. Moving on to departments. Water, getting any?
Those been completed, so. He only worked, and was that something I was supposed to work in?
So I got a call from the insurance company, asked if we had any been done with um, the damage that we had, um, the payment that we received. And I told them they were still doing some checking that we were having, uh, a few issues with the company that poured our roofs. Um, that there's supposed to be some warranty on those anyway, but we were still waiting on that, but I just figured we would decide for sure who's, uh, going to follow up with the repairs and make the appointments for the work to be done.
How's the, uh, storm grade?
Uh, where they're out, who's passed through the street, well, I'll get the department, that way pretty well wrapped up other than concreting the joints inside the entrance.
With themselves.
And then they'll move down to. A inch, so.
Okay.
Third foot right long.
Everything's good? Good? Any further discussion? Roads, water, that would works. Moving on to cemetery. And parks.
Do we know how soon they're going to wrap up going, or are they, you think they're done by now with the last one in the cemetery?
It all depends if the ones back there, it's looking good, you just cleaned up again.
Yeah.
Clearing branches.
Well, I appreciate you talking to us, because the headstones look all crap kind better than they did earlier in the summer. So paying a little closer attention to detail.
I would guess we're winding it down.
Yeah. Uh, parks and rent, had a meeting last Thursday, um, we're working to identify a specific date for a workday, we've identified some partners from Iowa State that are going to provide some manual labor, because those pieces of riprap, which are actually reformed pieces of concrete, are going to have to be hand laid into the stream bed. Uh, so it's, it's going to be a little labor intensive, we found some folks that are looking to blister their fingers. Um, but I need to get, be able to get some fabric and secure that before we start putting that rock down, so we can probably talk about, I, I don't even know if that's something we can find used from a, a landscaping company that has pulled it up. We, we can talk. Uh, Brett Fuller, Senator Newton Brent, is a representative from Ballard Little League, wanted to know where we stood as far as the city goes with regards to financing efforts to improve the ball fields. Um, I told him I can't answer that question with any authority, but I asked him to please identify uh, a list of the top five things he wants approved on the ball fields and a cost estimate, and we would go from there. The Opera Park, I'm going to jump in there and take care of that, so we can scratch it off the work session unless there's some things that you want to add at that point. David Frasca is working on the LLC with Aaron Day. I've met with the insurance reps, so now I'm in the process of trying to bring in the insurance guy, the city attorney, to come there together so we can get the language for our lease workout, uh, the big thing is what, what would they end up charging for to, to lease the park property? Um, and then also any addendums, like putting into the lease a two percent take on major events. Uh, you, I've seen that in some leases, that gets to be kind of money governed, but the whole point of this was to create revenue um, based on the park status of that piece of property. Jeep event that they held a couple of weeks ago was ginormous and hugely successful and very safe, there were no injuries. Um, they're looking at having a Bronco event coming on. Where I guess the same people that are passionate about their Jeeps, there's a group of people who are passionate about their Broncos. Um, first meeting was this last Thursday with the new leadership and they did a fantastic job, so I'm pleased with it. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is all I have to say about that. Any questions?
Good. All right, moving on to library.
Uh, we are pleased to announce that we'll move to the library board trustees. Um, we are also pleased to announce that I have a part-time library assistant, Alyssa Martin, um, with those right of Aaron Acquah as well. And, um, the library, we posted the craft vendor show in November, really excited about that. Um, we have completed our five-year strategic plan after lots of working on that. Uh, we have sent it to the state librarian consultant who says it's a very good plan and should be approved by the state right away in February. Um, in September, we had fourteen new patrons and our door count was three hundred and twenty-eight and total checkouts were five hundred. Very happy with all this numbers.
We had a lady that was here for a funeral, um, that stopped at the office and complimented the library, um, and she's from Aitney and just absolutely loved our libraries, so.
She said it was nice to know them.
No, wow.
That's, we'll take that, we've had several new families come into town and they've come to the library and gotten cards and I've had their kids play and they're very excited about the library and jobs.
Nice. Can I get a copy of that paper you have right there like afterwards?
Yeah.
Thanks. Uh, any further discussion for libraries? Moving on to finance and economic development.
So we, we did receive a boost grant, which is going towards getting a conference and plan. The grant is ten thousand dollars. So we'll have a visioning meeting in November, November twentieth, that's six thirty, so I'll send out invitations. It's kind of a vision.
You ever get a cost on that boost grant, or excuse me, not the boost grant?
Conference and plan, first was twenty-five thousand, so. But I, I was looking around for other people that might do it. And since they're working on one that's already done, it shouldn't pass, I don't know. I was looking for a little bit, so.
And the meeting on the twentieth here, what, what did they want to talk about?
It's a visioning meeting and led by Greg Pickla, and the boost grant steering the way and we'll put it up there.
So what was he looking for, he was looking for ideas?
When you see, where do you see Cambridge?
Well, maybe we were going to put something out about, uh, the residents.
Coming or asking people what they see, what, maybe on Facebook. I'll ask Greg for everyone, details on that.
Yeah, if you could do like a survey monkey, because that's free.
Yeah.
And then post it on Facebook for those that don't want to come or can attend. Yeah, and get everybody's vision for Cambridge.
Of course, if you go door to door too, they're getting something built in either. I know a few of those people.
All right, any more discussion for finance? Moving on to communications.
Nothing new.
Nothing from mitigation, nothing?
I haven't heard anything, other than they were waiting on a couple of communities to submit their new ideas.
Moving on to fire.
Uh, we're sitting at a hundred and sixty-three calls, uh, since January first of the year. Uh, the unit law that's been on, you've got deals, it's up to ten thousand, got a day left, a point two hours left on it. So that jumps up a little bit more. Uh, November sixth and seventh, where you are signed up to have our physicals done. Um, to meet the expectation of, to be, of worth this cost, so. Uh, that cost would be about forty-six, forty-six thousand dollars. If we weren't planning on this budget, so. Um, that'll be every five years, uh, my plan was that, with the cost being so high that, uh, at the three-year mark, um, we would have a queue to it and then just be able to do so many a year, um, just to keep that cost down every year. But and keep up on it every five years, sure a lot of people come and go, so I'll be able to work them in at that time too.
Matt and I discussed, um, carrying up with other communities, Huxley, um, Slater, Alcart, the C E O, we only have ten of them after three years that need it, maybe another town does, they charge an initial sixteen hundred dollars just, just to come. And then it's so much per person to do, um, it's called a fit test, and it's not just how fit they're physically, it's to make sure that their masks are fitting them properly, um, so that we don't have any firefighters going down, um, assholes and stuff like that, so.
The minimum, the minimum on that would be thirty, thirty-seven hundred dollars. Um, if we just go based on only sixteen people doing the fit test for their mask. That's what the fit test is, just to make sure that their masks feel tight and we're using the proper size, um, and all that. Uh, which that, that probably won't be the sixteen, probably be more than sixteen people that do that, but we will have some that are going to do the full thing, because we do know that they are, they're limited to doing other jobs, obviously.
Do you think there's a way that we can do, uh, some type of a fundraiser to help raise some funds to help pay for that, since that wasn't in our budget? Whether it be a soup separate or?
I mean, yeah, we can throw another one in, uh, we can ask the guys, you know, hey, you want to do another fundraiser? I guarantee I can tell you what the answer is.
Well, I'm just saying that that's what, where the funds are and we.
This was put out pretty hard to the point that we weren't, we couldn't say no.
Right.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have any work this fall.
Absolutely, we have to do it.
We're going to throw it in the budget, we're going to pay for it, we're going to eat it, and then that's just forty-six hundred dollars less than somewhere else this year, that's all that's going to be.
That every five years, yeah?
Yeah, every five years.
Okay.
So then, uh, with the remodel, we got our cabbage order, uh, that's fifty-eight hundred dollars, we were paying for it directly out of our stuff. Which was from the last quarter, so. Fire notices, so that, uh, those will be probably about four or five weeks out, we'll get those set in and then we can get our, uh, our tops measured and then that'll be solved and we wrap it up as things by now, just keep the holder up and start working more in there.
You guys have a fault test at all this year, like you've done in the past? I just didn't know something to put on our utility bill and come up or anything?
No, uh, with, with trying to put together the community center, the meeting room and the last stuff. We've been put, I've been trying with their. We've had more, uh, we, we probably, the majority of the group has probably already hit their, uh, given that hours for the year, um, that they were going to be required to do the twenty-four hours. Everybody's really showed up and, and hit the training really hard, which is great, it's a lot better than we've ever seen, so. So, yeah.
Thanks. All right, any further discussion for fire? Moving on to police. Anything, special job?
No.
Um, which reports?
Major.
So we're going to wrap this with mayor and council comments, we're going to adjourn this meeting and then we're expecting a work session after this meeting.
Well, that was some of our department heads and stuff, don't have to stick around while we're all going through a work session.
Yeah, it should just be moved down. Everybody's welcome to stay, everyone wants to stay, it's fine.
So what's the work session?
It's just, it's right up there, the, those items up there and then the council's going over some stuff, but nothing is having the action item, it's all just discussing what's going on and moving forward with it, that's what it is.
Well, I guess I got a comment here, I got. Well, I guess I got a comment here. I have a note here that Brent Hilgenberg has bought another flag, a large flag for the south end of town. I'm assuming that's where that's going.
It's really up, isn't it? Yeah.
Is that like, yeah, yeah, so.
Good, no, I wanna say thank you, Brent.
Yeah.
Doing that?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I'd be nice to put it on Facebook, make a picture. And acknowledge him. Donating to Boris.
Any other comments, council?
Do we want to invite Dr. Trimble to introduce herself and give us a sense of what her vision is with regards to the schools in December or November?
Is she ready to? I mean, she's been having a lot of little coffee sessions.
I, I know she has and I think that's, that's just the way the lady rolls. Um. I, I'm perfectly, I've been just been around on that. Which, that initially say no, this week, you know, after the first unit. Unless you guys don't wanna never share this safely, I don't. I would invite you.
You wanna do that November, December, December?
Yeah, let's do it in December because November's that election time.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. Let's, let's do it in December.
I'll go ahead and hear my question.
Good. Any further comments?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. As I have it. It's adjourned.
We're just reporting with.
Does that mean I can say something?